We will have a moment of silent meditation and then pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It's September 25th, 10:00 a.m., and all three county commissioners are here. We call the meeting into order, and we will now have the county administrator do consents and approvals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have 41 exonerations for $10,671.28, one request to create a statement for $513.82, vouchers for general county fund, $263,345.96, coal severance, $509.01, 911, $2,131.63, Chestnut Ridge Park, $5,053.56, Mason Dixon Park, $949.91, assessor's valuation, $3,144.25, Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $201,983.69, purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $6,828.60, 911, $6,450, Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,2375, for a voucher total of $484,816.92. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Westred Board of Zoning Appeals, Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, and the Mon County Abandoned Delapidated Enforcement Agency, fiduciary orders for September 25th, 2019.
Renata, did you remove that one voucher? Okay, so we... Do you know the amount?
Yes, $1,176.
I'm sorry, what was it?
$1,176.
Oh, and you were removing?
Yeah, we removed one voucher, so that general county number would decrease by $1,176, and the total would decrease by $1,176. But I would motion that we approve the amended amount.
Sure.
Second.
Voter moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There is an echo.
We removed this.
Can you hear? I don't know if you all can hear. Okay, okay. There we go. Thank you. Boy, that's a... Okay. Introduction of new employees and personnel changes. Good morning, MJ. How you doing?
Good morning. How are you guys?
Great.
Good. Thank you for introducing last week as I was out of town.
Oh, sure, no problem.
So I'm the director of Mon County Youth Services, and this is Karina Chaney.
Hi.
She's in the psychology department here in WVU, and she has worked several years with a camp program from her hometown, so I think she'll do good working with our kids. We've recently had a lot of personnel changes, a couple people leaving, so that's why...
What position would this be?
This is part-time.
Okay.
So like weekends and afternoons with the kids.
Move for approval? Second.
Voter moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for coming, and you don't have to stay if you don't want to. Is there anyone else that I've knew? Okay. Seeing none, we have comments from the public. Is there anyone interested in speaking at the public at this time to us? We'd love to have you. Okay. Great. Seeing none, we're pleased to have Sarah... Is it Palfrey or Pawfry?
Pawfry.
Pawfry, I apologize. Executive Director of Morgantown Public Library to give a annual report.
Have a second.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So thank you for having me. I'm glad to be here this morning. So I've been at the library now for about two and a half years. The last two years, our main focus has been about making the library easier to access and more accessible to a wider variety of people. And I'm pleased to show you in some of our annual report statistics this year that we have really come a long way with that. So first I give you just an overview of last year's budget, how it turned out, plus our projected budget for this year. There's a small increase because of the continued growth for the levy, for which we are very pleased. I have spent more than 20 years in public libraries, and I've never gotten to see a line, a revenue line item increase every year. It's really exciting, in addition to a small increase that we got from the city of Morgantown this year, too. But so our big number, which it's almost ridiculous to say it out loud because it sounds so silly, but over the last five years, we've had a 98% increase in the number of new cards we do in a year.
That's great.
We're looking at five years ago because that puts us back before the levy. It puts us back before a number of policy changes to really use it as a baseline to show our growth. And the growth has been across the county, which we're really excited about as well. We've seen increase in card applications at every location. So that's Clay Batel, Morgantown, Cheat area, Clinton District, and Arnetsville. Consistently for about the five or six years, you know, from 2010 through 2015, we did about 1,100 cards a year. It never varied more than 40 cards per year until the last two years, when it went up to 1,900, and then this past year went up to, I think it was 2,400. I don't have it on there. Yeah, about 2,500. So I know, it's really... We can't stop like being excited about it. We've seen a huge growth through partnerships with the middle schools. You know, all of our Mon County students are really fortunate to have access to Chromebooks, and so they can have a library in their house. With the digital materials that we have, all they needed was the card to connect the two. So we've been working with the middle schools, particularly South Middle has been really on it about getting all the sixth graders' cards. So but not only are people getting cards, but they're using them, which is even better. 21% increase in circulation as well from 2015. We expect to see an increase in digital. It grows every year astronomically. Over the last five years, we're looking at 80%. I mean, we now circulate more digital items than we do at our four branch locations combined. So the four branch locations check out about 75,000 items a year, your books, DVDs, audiobooks, that sort of thing. And this past year, we did 109,000, just digital format. This is great because we can meet people wherever they are. They don't have to come in when we're open. We can offer a wider variety of materials, both recreational reading plus educational things to meet their needs than we can ever begin to house in our buildings. One of the highlights that I like to point out, too, that is one of, I think, one of the reasons why I was so happy to move to Morgantown as well, is we've seen a 15% increase in our children's circulation, and that's physical books. Those are families looking for ways to create education in their homes, to use reading as recreation, and then also coming to our spaces to be a part of our community and to strengthen their ties with other partner organizations. And it's really indicative to me about the growth that we see in Mon County as a whole, and something we're very proud to be a part of. So we've taken on a couple of new initiatives in order to get to this point, really looking at our collections, making sure that at the different locations, they're representative of their communities, making more copies of new books available on the day they release. We now have people who come in on Tuesdays for New Book Tuesday to see what's on the shelf. This was, took a lot of changes in how we accounting and processing and behind-the-scenes things that we've streamlined and really tried to put the readers first. Our programs continue to be incredibly popular. We had about 10,000 participants last year at Just Our Kids and Family events. That was 370 programs offered. We offer kids programming at every single location. We saw another 2,500 at adults. And really, the stars of our show at the moment are our teens. We have been growing a really strong teen following. We offered 85 teen programs last year at two locations with 1,300 participants. We have quarterly teen lock-ins, which major kudos to the staff for getting locked in the library for four hours with about 30 teenagers. I have not had the privilege yet to be a part of that, but I do get the emergency text of "we need more pizza," usually about an hour into the program because, as it turns out, there is no limit to how much pizza 30 teenagers can eat. So I included a couple photos just sort of as a sampling of some of our programs. But you know, we do really try and reach all ages and different interest groups, you know, things that... We've got big, loud, noisy programs where we take over all three floors of the library, and it is full chaos, which is not for everyone. And then we have very quiet, you know, read the Rover time where kids can come in and just spend some quality time reading to a lovely dog who is not judgmental at all about their reading level or what they want to read, and will just sit and listen. We continue to look for more community groups and campus organizations to participate in our community read-alouds. We recognize that the Morgantown community is incredibly diverse, and we want to celebrate that by showcasing readers of different interests and backgrounds as best we can. So we're looking forward to our 2020 goals, the biggest of which is a strategic plan. When I started our long-range plan, we're required to have a three- to five-year plan on file with the State Library Commission, and we were out of date with that when I first started, so we had to get something filed relatively quickly. It was basically an internal document. We didn't... We got a little bit of community input, but not as much as we would like. So this time around, we're doing a bigger process. We have a consultant group coming in to help facilitate some of those focus groups, both with staff and with our communities and our partners, to really get a better picture of how we can align our mission, our values, our vision for where, not only where the library's been, but where we can go as a community. We've also spent some time over the past year, and will continue to do so, of really evaluating our budget and looking for places that we can be more efficient, but also looking at our grants that we have and needs for facilities and how we can use some of our savings and investments to get us where we need to be when it comes to our facilities plan. We did a inventory of our facilities in 2017 to establish ages of HVAC and plumbing and everything, sidewalks, steps, all of that, to really come up with a big plan of what needs to be improved, what is just time to move on to a new plan for. All our buildings are of various ages and in various states of need of renovation and/or expansion. And of course, 2020, hopefully, we will see a passage of the renewal of the countywide levy, which I'm sure we will be talking about soon. Our biggest impediment to everything we do is our facilities at this point, really. We are at capacity at every location that we have. As you can see, the need for libraries has not diminished. The use of libraries has not diminished, but the way people use libraries has changed drastically. And we find ourselves very much as a people place, and people take up more space than books lined along the wall. And so being able to have a responsive space that can change from, you know, a read baby read where all the kids are on the floor to a roundtable discussion, to book groups, is... Our spaces are very static, the way that they are. It's just the way that they were designed originally. And so we're looking for ways to continue to reorganize what we're currently in while also looking and planning for the future. That was a lot. And I forgot to look at my watch, but did you have any questions or anything else I can address? I'd be happy to do so.
Just a couple quick questions.
Sure.
In regard to your first two pages, it shows a 19 budget and a 20 budget.
Yeah.
What's the two columns that are not in the 20 budget? I can't...
Oh, the...
A-U-L-L.
The All Center, that's our, the building, the house located next to the downtown library. That's our local history and genealogy collection. We have, because they're both in Morgantown and they both use city funding, we've...
You just put it under.
We combined them.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mostly so we can share staff better, again, in this effort to sort of like economize some of, and make our staff more efficient and more crossover. When they're in separate line items, then it makes our payroll person a little crazy.
And then the Star City, there's a nominal 9,000 that was under that.
The Star City is, at this time, is just a programming line item. We do a storytime there, and the same thing, we've folded it into the Morgantown budget because we're treating it just at this time as an outreach activity.
Okay.
Gotcha. And then you mentioned your 2020 goals, and I applaud your taking a deep dive into looking further than just the next couple of years. The money you get from the levies, that's all program. It's all for pro...
It's operational.
It's operational program. So what is your... I mean, where are you looking for the... That facilities number is going to be a big number, and what's your at least thoughts? I'm not trying to hold you to anything, but yeah, that's a big problem. And how do you start, how do you start to plan to solve that?
It is. Yes, so the levy, city of Morgantown, plus the state aid, those are all... And the contributions from the Board of Education, that's all operational money. You know, we budget it, and we try and spend every penny of it that we can every year. For facilities purposes, we've been very fortunate over the last few years to have a couple of different estates and bequests left to us. It's not an extraordinary amount of money, but there... And some of it is restricted, and others is less restricted. So our goal is to try and make that money work better for us that we already have, and while looking for new, you know, grant funding is hard to come by, but it's not impossible. We're also looking at potential partnerships that could help to generate some other either income or make us more desirable for grant funding. The state, the Library Commission, does have some money available each year that we can apply for. They've put a strong emphasis on making places ADA compliant. We did get a grant from them this year to improve access at the Cheat Public Library, to put an automatic door opener on one of those, one of those doors. So like those smaller projects, we can pick off with some grant things. But when we're talking about like a brand-new facility for one of the locations, it's going to be a big capital campaign that we're going to have to embark on. We know that. Like, I wish there was a building ferry, but we know that doesn't happen.
So you've already checked into there's no building ferries?
There's no building ferry, unfortunately. If I could just, you know, I could put a little miniature model under my pillow, that'd be awesome. But the... Yeah, so we're working, we're trying to get sort of the vision in place before we can really look at the funding. We have some things, repair-type things, and we have some grants left, grants that have not been expended for certain locations that we're trying to, at this time, we're getting estimates on what it would look like to make, what repairs we can make within the parameters of the restrictions that were set for that grant money.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Since I've lived here all my life, I do recall the original library. I know there would have been no room for a read-aloud program or anything else in that facility. So also, the lady who was the original occupant of the All Center was a patient of mine, and I remember, you know, having conversations with her son after the property was accumulated by the library for this, you know, because that's really important. I do send a lot of requests through the Historical Society for genealogical research up to the All Center. But I remember checking out books from that original library, and I think that where we've come is great. Where we will go, I think, will be greater with these projects, really, really. And I will put my name on the volunteer list for read-aloud if you would have me. I do read at Energy Express.
Oh, fantastic.
And I was one of the first read-aloud readers in the middle 80s when they started the program in the schools. So I'm still fully capable, speaking as most people would attest to.
We would love to have you. And the All Center is celebrating its 15th anniversary this Friday night. If you're out for the arts walk, please stop by. We're gonna have a big old party there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Two quick comments. I just want to...
Yes.
I think it's thrilling to see when, on the new cards, a 140% increase out of the Clay Batel area.
Yes.
So it tells me that you're really reaching not just Morgantown, but out in the western end, and that's amazing. I mean, I'm just thrilled to see that. And the other thing is, I want to thank you. You were part of the Back to School Bash. You called us and asked to be a part of it, and it was very well received. And I want to throw out the option that when we have it next year, I know the date. I want to talk with you. We would love you to be there again.
We'd love to be there.
We thought that was a really neat program, to do the card right there. And I think that was a big surprise for many people.
Yeah, we're working on ways to make that a little bit more efficient. We have a sort of a hack we came up with in order to make that happen. But we love doing cards out in the community. Again, you don't have to walk in our doors to use the library anymore, so, you know, even doing it that first time is a challenge for people, and we're glad to meet them where they are.
Well, we appreciate it, and we will work with you when you come before us again for the new library levy. That's all we're allowed to say at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Colleen Coon, hello. We have grants. Do we have grants?
The first one was a request for reimbursement that had some time limits on it and needed to be signed as soon as possible. It's for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. And the request was for $120,761. It's already been signed. It just needed to be put into the record. And then the next thing I have, it's a schedule of payments. The, for the Day Report Center grant, they are going to be making quarterly payments. So you have to, Tom has to sign and say that it's been adopted that we agreed to have these done as quarterly payments, so.
Move for approval for the president to sign?
Second.
Voter moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any correspondence? We do, from the Triune Community Center. A thank you for the funding to replace the HVAC system.
Do you want to read the letter?
I will.
Yes.
Thank you to the entire Mon County Commission staff and commissioners for your support of the HVAC system upgrade to the Triune Community Center. The community will truly enjoy the central heating and air conditioning in the building. Stop by our soup dinner November 2nd from 4:00 to 6:00 and check it out.
Thank you. Any other correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
None.
Oh, this is moving great. New business. Consideration to approve an application for project infrastructure funding assistance as submitted by Mylan Park in the amount of $80,000 from the Mon County Development Authority's Coalbed Methane Fund. If I could have a motion in the second, then we could suspend the rules to allow them to speak to it.
Move to approve?
Second.
Voter moved in second, and we also suspend the rules. And if you'd like to both come up, and Ron, would you want to just want to introduce who you represent?
Well, thank you. I'm Ron Justice, President of the Mylan Park Foundation. This is Cliff Sutherland on our executive board, and we appreciate the time here for you today. So we'll try to be brief, but we want to give just a little background information. The request before you today is from the Coalbed Methane Fund that is separated from your general fund, but the purpose of that, as we understand it, is to look to make investment in areas where, at one time, mining activity could have taken place for new investment. And that's what we have, an opportunity that we want to bring to you today about. So for the past year or so, we have been working on potential opportunity in and behind where the existing Mylan Park school is today. We have about 19 acres back there that we've been working with different entities to look at potential development. There, again, there's a lot of moving parts. So one of the big moving parts, and we appreciate your all's partnership on this, is in 2022, there will be a road relocation somewhere in that Chaplain Hill area, and we know that. So, and we're very grateful for that. With that said, currently, we have a gravel road that services about nine homes. I think it's nine or 10 properties in a housing development that goes out past the school between Pace and the school that runs out to that development. On both the right and left-hand side, there's potential opportunity. The request before you today is that we have worked with the folks back there, and we've identified two potential and maybe three potential new projects that if we can relocate that road, and basically, there's a big curve in that road that will kind of straighten it out to give us the needed site to develop or to sell, to be developed. So the opportunity before us today is that within the next month, I would say a month, but six weeks, we would like to come back before this body and be able to give you full detail of a health-related opportunity that will bring not only new investment, but new jobs. It will be a private tax-paying entity located on one of the pad sites. What we have done is we have entered into a contract for a site of five acres. Mylan Park's put in another acre that will be maintained for the stormwater retention. Opens up another eight to nine acres for future things that we do not know what could happen at that future site. On the other side of the relocation of the road, and we have spoken with Pace, Pace has done a wonderful job, been a wonderful partner there. They are looking at a potential expansion of some of their operations, and they actually have a board meeting tonight, but they've been moving forward as well. So the key here is that we've went out, received the estimates of what the relocation would be. We went before the Mon County Development Authority a few months back as we're looking towards this opportunity. Just for the record, Sean and I both said on that commission, we both excused ourselves or abstained from that discussion, and Cliff presented that at that meeting. And they unanimously endorsed this project. I would like to let Cliff talk a little bit about, there was a lot of prelim work that had to go up to this because this will be the main right-of-way entrance to the new development, to Pace, as well as to the housing development. So the first step was getting them on board to agree to move the right-of-way. So Cliff, if you would.
Yeah, all nine or 10, I can't remember how many there were, obviously had to agree to the relocation and what we were doing. And they, every one of them, met with every one of them. They all agreed. Actually, they're pretty excited about the opportunity.
Nice work.
To straighten the road and have it paved
Yes.
to their property. So everybody is on board with it.
And we do understand, and we are in a position fortunately, that, you know, we would go ahead and move forward with the construction, and this is a reimbursable grant, and we would obviously work with Renata or anyone you would direct us to on working through that. But we are in a position to do that and actually could probably, with approval, schedule some of the work to begin within the next month.
I want to add that I said that they agreed. They actually signed the documents.
There's a difference between agreeing and signing.
Yes, yes. So great.
And just to clarify, as Ron had mentioned, this was a, this is the Coalbed Methane Fund, which runs through the Development Authority.
Right.
It just has to come, once the Development Authority vets it and approves the project, then it has to come to us for approval. So during that process, I did not participate in it, nor did I participate in the Mylan Park discussions regarding this. So I just want that to be made clear. The other is also, as Ron mentioned, it is reimbursable. They spend the money on the infrastructure and will reimburse them. And the amount that is, was requested in the application is $80,000. I don't know if that was mentioned yet.
Yeah. Yeah, in the motion.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. You have any other questions? This is exciting, good. Since we have a motion in a second, call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It now passes, great. To consider request by Main Street Morgantown at VFW Post 548 for use of the Courthouse Square.
Main Street Morgantown has requested October the 11th from 4 o'clock to 9 o'clock to have a family, fun family football Friday. And VFW Post 548 is requested November the 11th from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for Veterans Day celebration.
Move for approval?
Second.
Both items?
And second on both items, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. To consider funding request by the Civil Air Patrol for fiscal year 2020, if we could have a motion in second and explain.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, you want to explain, yes.
If you guys recall, the Civil Air Patrol came and talked to us in executive, not executive session, a work session, a couple months ago, and I had kind of dropped the ball on this, because Renetta wasn't here, so I was going to bring it, have it brought up on our agenda, but we agreed at that time that we would consider funding. For people that don't know, the Civilian Air Patrol is the official civilian auxiliary of the United States Air Force. It's, it's chartered by the U.S. Congress, and it is, it's a strategic partner of the Air Force, serving as part of its total force. It has three primary missions, emergency services, cadet program, and aerospace education. The programs, which what we're really excited about is it educates youth in leadership, aerospace, fitness, and other character development. It nurtures the skill of CAP cadets who actually make up 10% of the U.S. Air Force Academy's class. So this is, and as they earn certain distinctions in this program, as they enlist in the Air Force, the Army, or the Coast Guard, they actually qualify for a higher pay rate. So it's a really good program for these kids. I believe right now there are 17 kids in the program, and this is, this is the consistent normal example of an unfunded mandate. They have the program, it's, it's chartered by the U.S. Congress, the state quasi-funds it, and that's, that's why they've come to us, because they've gotten hit with two things. One is a reduction in state funding, and two, with the airport project and the elimination of the old hangars, they get moved into the new hangars and the rent's doubling. So we're, I'm gonna continue conversations with them in the city, point them in a direction to the city in regards to if they can get some relief on their rent, but for their programs and for their scholarships that they offer, and for the continuation of the years, this program that they actually have, 17 kids in the program, we, I propose that we fund them at the level of $3,000 for fiscal year 20.
I agree. We're all in agreement, so if we get an official vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
And I'd like to have them, once, I'd like to have them at their convenience come in and kind of give, give.
An update.
An update and educate the public on what Civil Air Patrol does, because they do a lot, they do a lot of, I mean, Jimmy's probably aware of, they do a lot of search assistance with search and rescue, but they, right now, they don't, can't afford the gas for their plane, so they can actually assist, so this is where this is going to help out.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other new business items?
No, sir.
Okay, then we will look to see, are there any reports from any elected officials? Okay, seeing none, we're getting towards the end. Reports from County Commission, Ed?
It's been a rather busier week than last week. Thursday, did attend the North Central Home Builders Association to hear our planners' discussion of the proposed subdivision regulations, which were really, I believe, positively received by all. Only funded one negative question during the evening. Friday, our Historical Society met, and on Sunday, I did address the Executive Council of County Commissioners who were meeting in Granville. After that, there was some time left, so I was able to go to the Wine and Jazz Festival being held at Camp Muffley, one of our parks. I would also like to commend Bobby Doyle and his crew, the staining that has been going on, on the new dining hall as well as the old dining hall now named the Assembly Hall, looks excellent, so thank you. Monday evening, of course, the camp board did meet, holding its monthly meeting. Tuesday morning, we had our 4-H and Extension Center meeting out at Myland Park, and last night, I was present at Cool Springs at a rather new facility for the firemen, and it really was great for the firemen's meeting. Tomorrow evening is the Farm Bureau banquet, and lastly, I do not like to end on a note like this, but it does sadden me to hear the news of an interim dean announcing that the dairy herd of WVU is to be dispersed and sold. I grew up the son of a dairy farmer, grandson of a dairy farmer, and this hits home very hard for me, so that's my report.
Thank you.
Since last meeting, last Wednesday, we had our Morgantown area partnership meeting. On Friday, we had the extension building walkthrough, and there's a lot going on in the building, actually, they're paving today, so around the building, you know, it'll all be black. So there's, there's a lot moving, a lot of moving parts as we push towards that, our anticipated date that we're going to have extension move in, and, and then soon after that, have ag move in. To that, to that end, we also have our regular Tuesday extension building meeting, which I participated in. Today, we have regular business. Tomorrow, I have Mon County Health Department Board of Health meeting. As Commissioner Hawkins mentioned, I have the Farm Bureau meeting or dinner that I'm going to attend that night, and I'm gonna try to make the reception, I've been invited to at Fairmont State. They had a reception and invited all elected officials, so I'm gonna try to make that also. Friday, we have the extension building walkthrough. I don't know whether I'll make it back in time, because I'm gonna be in Preston County for the Buckwheat Festival for, the middle school has a, marches in a parade at 2 o'clock. In general, I've been running around, this is, we're right in the middle of our cross-country season. Yesterday, I was in Fairmont, Saturday, I'm in Elkins, and Tuesday, if you're in White Park area, stay away from the White Park area on Tuesday, because that's when they have the South Stampede, and there's, it's hard to, nothing moves in White Park. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I was fortunate on Monday to represent the County Commissioners at the West Virginia Economic Summit, and I personally want to thank Kay Fanek, who took the bus tours and they went through to the Myland Park area, the facilities, and also to West Ridge, so I really appreciated that. I am going to plan, and I think it is really nice that Fairmont State did send out something to us, and we have never gone over to there, and so I think it's really nice that we are gonna, that they asked us, and we, we will be going, so hopefully, the two of us will be able to be there. Third, I did give to you, and again, it's a very early preliminary draft of the Patterson Drive Pedestrian Safety Pilot Project crosswalk over by Laurel Street where the church has the parking facility crossing over to the WVU campus. And again, it's preliminary, but I did want you to be aware of it. And finally, I'm proud to say I have a little more energy than normal. This past weekend, I was in Philadelphia, the weather was amazing, and the groom showed up, my daughter showed up, and they got married, which is, you're very worried when you never know. So it was a great wedding, and I'm thrilled, and, and a shameless plug, I'm wearing an Ochs coffee button because he owns and runs an Ochs coffee restaurant, so if anyone is ever in, on Third Street down by South Street in Philadelphia, we have a coffee place, we'd love you to come. So with that, it's been a great, great weekend, the Mountaineers won, and we're off this week. So with that.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Proper move in second, we be gone. Thank you.